Call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Level?
Here.
Mr. Parnell?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I would like to actually amend the agenda. We had a facilities meeting on Friday, and I know that there's not a report out tonight, and so I'd just like to have that added if possible.
All right. So we could add that under Board Reports, Item E. Facilities Committee Report. So do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda as noted?
I'll still move that we do that.
To approve the amended agenda?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. Under Board President's comments, I'd just like to note that Matt Kelly and I just returned last weekend. We went to the National School Board Association meeting, and we were able to get a lot of great information to bring back. It was interesting, a lot of the sessions, I would say the pendulum has swung from all data-driven to talking a lot more about relationship-building in districts and the importance of that in education. I said my most meaningful session for me was a young man who's 25, who went and spent time in a classroom undercover, and what he uncovered about what teens are facing in classes today. I thought that was really interesting. I don't know if Matt and Kelly have anything to add about some sessions they attended?
I thought, I was impressed that there was a lot of sessions on social and emotional learning, and social-emotional, and mental health awareness, and I thought that was nice to see.
Lots of sessions on that, on the social-emotional learning piece. Like you said, the pendulum has swung back, and I think there are a lot of things that I think we're doing or working on here, and that was good to see that we're sort of on the forefront of that, so I was encouraged by that. And Ken Robinson was Ken Robinson, and good stuff.
Yeah, so it was very worthwhile.
Yep.
Superintendent's comments, Matt?
The only other thing I was going to add is we are pleased to announce that one of our teachers from Lakota West, Anne Marie Clevenant, will be going to South Korea next week to present with digital promise three other schools, three other teachers, on innovation happening across the country. And so it was through the league, and they picked her as part of the Real World Learning Challenge Collaborate that she's been working on, and they're covering all the costs and expenses. So can't wait to hear back from Ms. Clevenant when she gets back about what she learned and what she was able to share over in South Korea.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Jenny, and Treasurer's comments?
I don't have any at this time.
Do you want to, we made some changes from the original agenda that was posted online, and we're going to make the presentation, if you had seen that online, we're going to make that presentation at probably our next meeting.
Correct, about the fair funding school model that's being proposed, so, yeah.
So with that, we'll move to student spotlights.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan. Every day we see examples of the student-centered learning that's taking place in our classrooms. Just search We Are Lakota, and your newsfeed will be filled. Tonight, you're going to meet six elementary students, sorry, five elementary students, who were given two really cool assignments in class. One group created documentaries, and the other presented TED Talks. The students you'll meet tonight chose their topics carefully because they wanted to teach their classmates about something that is important to them. First up, I'd like to introduce you to Sidney Alderman, Victoria Rodriguez, Noel Shalash, and Maggie Todd. These Union 5th graders filmed a documentary about depression to share with their classmates. We'll show you a clip from the film, and then they're going to tell you more about the project and why they chose it.
Sorry, just waiting. So what's your name?
Emma Smith.
My name's Dr. Chris Apple. So what have you been thinking about lately?
Well, my best friend bullies me. Like, what does she do to me? Like physically, or anything? She calls me names.
What kind of names?
You know, I'm not allowed to say them.
Have you ever, have you ever even thought about a bully?
No.
Why are you so much fun?
She just reminds me of the ones I've met. We have so many enemies.
Have you ever written a diary before?
No.
Maybe you should, I know that's helped a lot of people. Come on, let's go. And now, interrupting the program is Victoria Rodriguez with a little information behind all of this.
Good evening, Lakota District School Board members. Thank you for inviting us here today for us to share our presentation with you. My name's Victoria.
My name's Maggie.
I am Sidney.
And my name's Noel.
In our enrichment slash TNE, in Ms. Overberg's room, the, her enrichment was UTV. The assignment was to make a documentary about something you were passionate about. We decided to make it about mental health.
We decided, we decided to do mental health as our topic because we wanted to spread awareness about something not many people, not many people talk about or feel comfortable talking about in public.
Another reason why we wanted to do this topic is because we have a few personal experience of this. We've also learned so much along this journey.
What I found scary is that 828,000 people die from suicide each year, and the worst part is that so many people could do something to prevent this.
What I found out, what I found out is that junk food, like donuts and coffee, can worsen depression, and people don't even notice, really. What, what is even scarier is that half the population of the US is obese.
We also found out that there are more than just one type of depression, not just one. So like, there are a lot more. At first, I thought it was just depression, but really, there are more.
I found it interesting that there are many ways to cope with depression, like writing in a diary.
Also, antidepressants can worsen your state of depression in some cases.
I don't have any questions, but it's always great to have our students here, talking about the things that they're passionate about. And what I love is the thing that you are passionate about ultimately helps everybody else, which is really cool. And it seems like you all are really excited about it. And have you been able to share this outside of here with a lot of people? Yeah?
Kind of.
Kinda?
Soon.
Soon? Very cool, very cool.
How did you do your research on this project?
Well, we looked a lot of things up, and some things came from like personal experiences.
And we also looked into some people who just had depression, and like saw how the antidepressants work.
Did one of you come up with it and recruit the others, or did you all pretty much come up with it at the same time, or?
Well, I mean, I think Sidney was the one that was like, what about this? And we were all like, oh, that's a really good idea.
That's.
Kind of like, at first, we were kind of thinking of like history, but then, like, like Maggie said, Sidney brought up the idea of like, what if we do something that we can kind of spread awareness up through people? And then we thought, oh, mental health, that's a really bad thing in the world, you just want to spread it.
And it's such a relevant topic right now, is what we heard last weekend. So very impressive. I think in 5th grade, I just wanted to be able to get all the way up the hopscotch thing. So, we're pretty impressed.
Probably the thing that amazes me the most is that early in 5th grade.
Right, exactly.
Absolutely.
Well done.
It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our other person then.
So 6th graders at Freedom Elementary School had an interesting assignment in their ELA class. After watching some examples, the students were tasked with creating a TED Talk that would teach their fellow classmates about something that they were interested in. Diego Rodriguez used this as an opportunity to educate his class about bullying. So tonight, Diego is actually going to present his TED Talk to you.
Let me ask you a question. How many have been bullied by someone you trust or trusted? Doesn't it make you feel clueless on why they're being so mean after you guys have been such good friends? Well, this situation happened to me. It was with my friend Tyler, and it made me feel really clueless on why he was being so mean after we've been friends for two years. A couple weeks go by, and all his behavior is doing is getting worse. It makes me wonder on why he's behaving this way, and it made others curious as well. Nobody acknowledged what he was doing or why he was doing this. And a few days go by, and he's crying by a pool every single day after he picks on a kid. Again, nobody had the courage to talk to him until I grabbed the courage that nobody else could have. I talked to him, and we started having this conversation back and forth, and he finally tells me what was wrong. He goes, "My grandfather died." And it takes me a minute to process on why he has to express his feelings in this way. But I remember that his parents were divorced, and he didn't feel comfortable talking to his mom about his feelings. I started checking in on him every single day after that day, and it solved his problem. He need, he just needs somebody to talk to, and he also needed somebody to make him feel like somebody cared about him. So remember, anti-bullying doesn't only require courage from the bullies to stop, it also requires courage from you. Now, let me ask you this question. How many of you have been physically hit or talked behind your back by a bully? Okay. Now, if people physically hurt you, it's not just in-school problem, it's something that needs to be fixed all around the world. And 21% of kids get cyberbullied, and 20% get normal bullied. Seems like such a small problem for a big, like, consult, concern for a bunch of adults. And what if I told you that was only in the US? 55% of kids get physically hit from time to time, and it's scary to even think about. It's my number-one priority to stop all of this, and it should be yours, too. Now, let me get back to people talking behind your back. If people talk behind your back, all you need to do is let them, because if they talk behind your back, that's only because they deserve to be behind you. And if you're the one talking behind somebody's back, then you're putting somebody on a path to being a better person and ahead of you. It's just the way things work in this world. I want you guys to know, and to really think about what I'm going to ask you next, and answer this in your heads. Do you stand with me, or do you need to change as a person? Did you know that 19% of kids have to get outside of school help just because of bullies? It's really crazy, because if you have to have therapy just because of one person or a group of people teasing you every single day, then it's something that's not needed in this world. I'm going to ask you a question, and I'd prefer that if you guys would stand up and not raise your hand. How many of you have been bullied in general? I'm so glad that a lot of you are standing up. It's really concerning, because 66% of kids who are bullied don't even report it. It's just really sad, because just because you are bullied and don't report it, doesn't mean that it's going to go away and people will not know about it. It's one thing that will cause another. It also ties in with those 19% of kids who have to have therapy, which you can assume that a small portion of those kids commit suicide because of those. They will be realized later on by that bully. The bully will realize and want to apologize, but know that it will be too late. And it's the same thing if you don't stand up to the fact that you are being bullied. Now, I need to tell you guys something very important. While you're being bullied, you feel like you don't matter, and that's why those kids need to have, need to have therapy. But I want you guys to remember, just because you are one person in this world, doesn't mean that you're not the world to one person. You are defined by the choices that you do. If you're a bully, you're putting somebody on being a better path and better person than you. If you are a bystander, you might as well just call yourself a bully. But if you are the victim that's getting bullied, you are a flower waiting to bloom. Because I'm letting you know that it will get better. Remember that at the end of rain, there's a rainbow. I want you guys to close your eyes now. Know that this is a very important question, and I want you guys to answer it with all honesty. I know a lot of you will say yes and not mean it, so I need you guys to answer it. Do you guys want to help me in changing the world's biggest problem? Open. What was your choice?
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment that it's, I'm incredibly impressed by the whole TED Talk and everything, but I am incredibly impressed that when you were being bullied, that instead of retreating, or bullying back, or anything like that, you went to your friend and asked why. Because they say that most bullies are bullying because they've been hurt themselves.
Yeah.
So that was very impressive. Thank you for that.
It's obviously a very heavy subject that you were dealing with, plus you're doing that, plus talking in front of a room of adults and other, other students, and that's admirable as well. I mean, one of those things is hard enough, but you had that combination of everything. That's very impressive, any young man.
I don't have anything else to add.
Well done, thank you.
Well done, thank you.
So we're going to do one more recognition, and then, and then we'll take a picture with everybody, if that's okay? All right. Much to Mr. Miller's chagrin, we decided to have our superintendent as our staff spotlight this week, and we are going to recognize him. So we had to override him and put him on the agenda without his approval. So as you may have read, Mr. Miller received the Communication Technology Award for Superintendents. This is a national award, and this is the first time any superintendent in the state of Ohio has received this award. So the submission for this award was 18 pages long in the packet that was sent in for his, for him to get this recognition. And I want to read a couple of the excerpts from letters that were sent in, in support of Mr. Miller. One letter stated, "Matthew Miller consistently sets the bar for communication in educational realms. His ongoing transparent and diverse communication methods only help to strengthen the commitment to education in our region. He sets the gold standard for which other superintendents can only hope to ascribe while serving as a mentor to staff, students, and colleagues. He epitomizes what it means to be an innovative educational leader that leverages multiple communication resources to provide authentic and accessible communication. Matt leads by example and gains respect from all that have the honor of working side-by-side with him." And then a second letter stated, and this was by a local businessperson who is also a Lakota alum, stated, "When Matt came to Lakota a little over a year ago, he vastly increased Lakota's visibility in the community. He has engaged staff in new ways, getting them excited about teaching kids every day and sharing new ideas and best practices among peers. Matt has engaged students by making them part of the district's communication, having students lead Twitter training sessions with staff, and even leading district ed chats on Twitter. Matt and his leadership have truly redefined and upgraded communication in Lakota, not only to students and teachers that are in the buildings every day, but really to the entire community. I couldn't think of a better superintendent for this award." And then just a few of the metrics that I wanted to highlight of things that have actually changed. Lakota has grown its collective Twitter and Instagram following to more than 5,300 followers in just a year and a half. 244,000 impressions were made last month, up from 9,400 the month that it was launched. So that's a little bit of a increase there, if you look at that metric. The YouTube channel subscribers have increased by over 735%, and we've attracted 1,200 non-parental subscribers to the district email, and the new mobile app has been downloaded 9,100 times and has experienced an average daily page view rate of 922. And we've distributed more than 1,100 flyers using our Peach Jar communication tool. So those are just a few of the metrics that I wanted to highlight. So I think this award was very well deserved, even though Matt is, is matching a little bit the color of his hair tonight.
I was going to say, his face is a bit red as his hair right now.
So we wanted to recognize that, and thank you for all you're doing to improve the communication that we all think is so important to highlight, all the great things that are happening in Lakota.
So thank you for the board's acknowledgement of that and recognition of that, and as we can tell tonight, it's awesome when we have kids and staff telling our story, and I just get to amplify it. But our teachers, and our students, and administrators, and even community are really putting out the words about all the great things happening in our school district, so again, I just get to amplify some of that. And special kudos, too, to our communications and media relations team of Betsy Fuller, and Lauren Bedsher, and Cindy Zanies, who put all that word out, too, so, but thank you.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that, if we could come up and take a photo with everybody. Sign that and hang that in your office?
All right. I'll give it to mom.
There you go, yeah. Give it to your mom. All right. And with that, we move to our first opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the board pertaining to anything on the agenda, they may do so at this time. All right, seeing no one, we'll move to Board Reports, Policy Committee.
Yeah, we had a policy committee this past Friday, and Mr. Vogelmann's going to come up and give us an overview. It was our big Neola update.
It was riveting.
Riveting. Yes, it was riveting.
I bet you couldn't sleep afterwards.
Just a couple reminders real quick. First of all, there are two policies that will be up for second read and approval later tonight. The 5421 grading, just a reminder, that comes from the removal of the sentence, "The superintendent shall set the minimum percentage. That shall be awarded to all students who complete homework tests as quizzes. Zeros will not be awarded except to students who fail to complete any above. We feel like that information is covered in guideline," and that sentence can be a little misleading at times, so we removed that, went through first read last time. The other one is 6325, procurement of federal funds and grants. This policy was a carryover from the August Neola. Our Neola representative had requested to spend a little more time with our treasurer to cover that. Those conversations and times have taken place, so that is ready for your approval at this time. And as Mr. Level mentioned, this past Friday, April 5th, we had our monthly policy meeting that included the winter-spring 2019 update from Neola. Due to the short turnaround on time, we weren't able to have the policies ready tonight for first read, so at the next board meeting, you will have five policies from district reviews, and nine policies from the Neola winter-spring update. Nothing of major urgency, or else we would have tried to get those to you tonight. Most of the updates from Neola are mostly language changes and actually catching up with the change of terms from the old terms from "No Child Left Behind" to the new ESSA terms. So that's where a majority of the policy changes you'll see. And then also, just a piece of information, the current CEO of Neola is going to schedule a seminar in the southwest Ohio region this spring to introduce possible new policies surrounding social media. This could trigger further policy changes that address all types of social media, so there are some policies that are hanging out there that are possibilities. It just depends on how that seminar wraps up, and if that is something we want to pursue or not. So those could be some future topics for policy in the future. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Appreciate it.
Riveting work. I was going to say, thanks for that riveting report. All right, Community Engagement Committee. Kelly, do you want to take that? Do you want me to?
We both can. We had a DPC meeting last Wednesday. It was mostly, the previous DPC meeting, we had a little bit of a mini-community conversation, and out of that came some what we thought were people, questions that people had. So we took this opportunity to let Matt lead the DPC, and he answered some questions, gave an update. Keith Coney gave an update on the portrait of a graduate. Asked for some feedback on the little color wheel. What else? Then we had a community coffee chat right afterwards. The community conversation you all saw for this week is canceled, the one on April 11th, and then the next one is the one on May 6th, which is the mashup of a coffee chat and a community conversation. So I think that's it.
May 6th is, which one?
It's the mashup one. It's the kind of open-form one.
It's the general.
The one where.
Is this the one for traditional family values and all that kind of stuff?
It's for anything that we haven't already discussed.
Okay.
That's how we're trying to frame it, because we only have 90 minutes, so we're not, we don't want to discuss anything we've already done in a community conversation, like.
Right, okay.
You know, theater, we've done theater, band. So yeah, there's a format, and if you know people that want to come, if you could forward the invitation, because there is a place for them, trying a little different format, where they're going to put on the invitation when they accept what topic they want to discuss, and then.
Who did the invitation go to?
It's on the Facebook, the website.
So how does anybody know that it's there?
Well, if you get any.
It's like any other community conversation, and then you forward it out to anybody that you would like to invite.
Yeah, if you get any kind of district communication, it's on all the district communications, on the website, Facebook page, Twitter.
Okay, because I know some of the topics were brought to me by Mr. Jesse back there. Can you help me get that invitation out?
Why don't, after the meeting, why don't you, we can, yeah, yeah, we'll.
It's on the website.
It's on the website, it's on the Facebook page, and then if you just forward it to anybody that is interested, again, it's a little bit different format, so what it will be is that when you RSVP that you're coming, they're asking you to put what topic you would like to discuss. would like to discuss, so that we can cluster the topics and cluster people in groups by topic.
That's going to be May 6th?
May 6th.
Do you know where that is?
Lakota East.
Oh, East, okay.
Six thirty.
I mean, I guess I can go on the website and look at it.
Yeah, but I'm here. That's right. I'm here, and I'm giving a report, so I might as well tell you. It's, I think it's in the Media Center at Lakota East, because we've had a hard time finding a room, or the Innovation Hub. Sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye, Bert.
All right.
I know.
And then, any other questions on community engagement? Butler Tech, I, he has, Linda, he has a report from Linda.
Mrs. O'Connor had to leave town on business, and she forwarded me her Butler Tech report, and I assured her that I would report.
Hey, Todd, can you put the microphone clear? I'm sorry. I just...
Is that better?
Yeah, I just can't hear with the...
Sorry. So Linda attended the, as the liaison for Butler Tech, the National Policy Seminar in Washington, D.C. In addition to the advocacy conference, the legislative team from Butler Tech met with Warren Davidson, Brad Winstrup, senators Portman, Brown, Kane, and Shebitt. And visits were to provide an update on Butler Tech's work and address future needs in career education. They also met with several industry leaders to discuss workforce needs and future trends, and senior political correspondent for Fox News, Chad Pergram. I don't know him. For an update on the current political issues in Washington related to education, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We thank Linda for taking the time to do that.
All right. With that, we'll move to Legislative Committee report. We have...
There's not a lot. The budget bill is now, has a number, and has come out, it's one sixty-six, I believe. So in there, having, if you'd like to go this week, they're having testimony. There's a form if you'd like to go up and testify on the budget bill. Other than that, there is the, obviously, the budget bill goes hand-in-hand with the Cut Patterson stuff that Jenny has been working on and that we will talk about at the next meeting. There's also the transportation bill passed, I think it was House Bill sixty-two, which basically is the funding the transportation and the, how it affects us is that it holds us harmless for the cost of the fuel. Other than that, there's just a couple, I don't think there's any other really bills that Matt, can you think of that?
No, the only thing I have on that, the Ohio Fair Schools funding formula is obviously, we went to a meeting for that.
Right.
The other thing would be, I have a BASSA legislative meeting tied to that next week. Also, BASSA's making a big deal or splash out of the report card meeting that we have next week as well. One's Tuesday, one's Thursday, and going to have both Republicans and Democrats there talking about changes for the report card. So whatever I'll learn, I'll share back with all of us.
And I testified two times. So now that you can go up and testify, anyone who wants to go up and testify on the budget bill, prior to that, it was by invitation only. So I went up and testified twice before the Subcommittee on Education, the Finance Subcommittee on Education. Those amendments should be coming forward, so in the next few weeks, we should see a House version of the budget bill, and it'll start moving. So more to come.
There's a lot of things in the pipeline that...
And there were the regional meetings on the fair funding formula, and so most of us were able to make it to that last Tuesday at Princeton. So that was very informative.
Just to see the next step of where they are.
Jenny did a great job with that, and I'm sure the testimony was good as well.
All right. Anything else? All right. And with that, we'll move to the Facility Committee.
Yeah, so we, Todd and I had an opportunity to meet with Chris Bissarge this past Friday. Chris had sent out an email, kind of outlining some of the facilities work that he's been doing now that we have the enrollment study back. There's not a lot to talk about right now on that list, other than the fact that Todd and I had a conversation around really trying to plan a future work session where the fire, the seven of us have the opportunity to actually go out to the facilities and see some of the facility needs. I personally believe, and Todd, you can obviously give me your, give your opinion as well, but, you know, before we really start digging into a lot of rich conversation about facility needs in the future, we all need to be starting at the same kind of point, baseline. And so my recommendation would be to really nail down a future work date, and then have Chris work with us on the Facilities Committee to really determine where are the places that we need to go and see, to start building that basic understanding.
We have a work date on the calendar. Do we, I mean, do we want to do that on our next work date, or...
I think our next work date is filled with financial issues, so I, in my opinion, I'm not sure that we'll be able to do that on the April work date, because I, we've already earmarked that for the five-year forecast and the Cut Patterson work, so we might have to...
Add a work session?
Yeah. Depending on the urgency of that.
I mean, I think it's something that we want to move forward with.
So...
We need to start having conversations.
There is some urgency. I mean, the enrollment's changing, and Chris explained that one school might be overused at one point, and two years later, it's switched to a different school.
Sure.
And I know they're moving some things around. There were four buildings we discussed that the board really needs to go out and see. So if we could do it on the following work session after the financial one, that'd be great.
Yeah. I mean, or maybe, you know, if we're willing to do a longer work session, we could certainly see about doing that as well, so we can just...
We'd do a longer one or add one, whichever is easiest.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. And with that, we move to Treasurer's Recommendations A and B, Approval of Board Minutes, and a Resolution for Rates as Determined by the Butler County Budget Commission. Do I have a motion for approval of Treasurer's Recommendations A and B?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we move to Superintendent's Recommendations A through G. We have approval of personnel items. We have a motion to rescind a termination. We have approval of board policies, a field trip, a resolution to rank firms, a paving bid, and donations. Do I have a motion to approve?
Are we approving all these together?
I was going to...
Yes, I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that the motion to rescind the termination also goes along with an accept, acceptance of a resignation.
Yes.
So I want to break that out.
Right. All right. Any further discussion?
Thanks for the clarification.
All right. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. All right. With that, we move to the second opportunity for public comment. Do you, I had someone who signed in as a maybe, so...
Hi, I'm Linda Nix, oh, four-two-four-three, Milliken Road, Liberty Township, Ohio. A couple of things. One, you guys were talking about the community conversation, because I just got an email today about the conversation on the fifteenth, so that's been canceled now?
On the fifteenth? No, there wasn't one on the fifteenth.
Yes, there is. There is one on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth? Oh, I'm sorry.
Social, emotional...
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, right, right.
It's still there?
Yes, the eleventh was canceled.
Wait, sorry. I was sure I didn't have my email out, and I was like, ah, okay. And then, two, it is very difficult to hear in here. You guys really need to get the microphones closer, so we can hear what's going on. And then, as far as the motion to rescind the firing, do we have any financial input, or how is that? I mean, I know we're, I think we're an open community as far as finances go. What it's cost us as far as Mrs. Osterling's termination, what is it costing the school system, and what is it costing as far as the settlement goes? That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time?
Should be in board docs, shouldn't it? Okay.
Jenny or Matt, would you like to respond?
So we do have the agreement, the termination agreement, which, after approval, is, yeah, I mean, it lists...
Public right now?
It's public, so...
I'm there?
No, I have it here, so, yeah. If someone wants to request a copy of it.
We'll get it to you.
Yes.
So, and we will do a better job of trying to speak into our mics. We recognize that there are challenges in here acoustically. We keep trying to adjust different things, and we keep, I think today, we talked about trying to get the fans to be turned off. I think all we did was get the air turned off and not the fans somehow.
Yeah. So now it's loud and hot.
It's, it's very warm, but the fans are still blowing. So we're working on that and recognizing it as a challenge, so we'll do, we'll try to do a better job of getting our mics closer, and we're a work in progress in trying to get the acoustics worked out in here. So thank you for that feedback. And yes, the, the, there's a...
That's my bad.
Social, emotional, behavioral, I'm not sure exactly what it's called, but there is on April fifteenth, another community conversation that is still ongoing with Tina Pratt, and that will still continue. So it was one with students that was April 11th during the day, that the students had a conflict during the day that day, so they've punted that to a later date, and we don't know what that's going to be.
Students are just too busy.
But that was just, yeah. But that was just with the students during the day, so that didn't affect, and that wasn't even on the public calendar, because it was just during the day with students. So I think that touches all of the concerns. And with that, I'll start with Matt today for closing comments.
The only other thing that I have to say, just to remind everybody, that our military signing or ceremony, commitment ceremony, is Tuesday, April 30th, at East Freshmen. So we're looking forward to, I think we're up to thirty-eight students that are going into one of the branches of our military or one of the service academies, so we're excited about that.
Do you know what time that is?
Seven P.M. East Freshmen.
I don't have any comments tonight. Thanks.
I do not either.
I'm good.
I was just going to mention that we had the opportunity on Saturday to go to the Athletic Booster Ash for both the east and west, and it's always, it's always a good time. And I, I just think it's a statement on the support that our community continually gives our school system, both athletic, athletics and academics, and appreciate the support, I'm sure, of everybody that went, and I saw a lot of teachers there, a lot of administrators, and a lot of people having a lot of fun. A lot, a lot of...
It was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Yep, and I know we were out of town and missed the Jazz and Cakes, but it was also the Jazz and Cakes event for our band program as well. So a lot of support went into that as well, and a lot of work. So again, as always, we so appreciate all the community's efforts and, and support, and we can't do what we do without the support of so many in our community, and they make Lakota what it is every day. So we appreciate that, and I'm sure we're missing a ton of things that are, that are being done to support our community in every single school building. We're in the homestretch right now. As we enter the end of the year, I feel like everybody's gearing up, and every night there's so many activities, so we look forward to it.
The Multicultural Fest at Ikey as well.
Yep, that was Saturday as well. So we look forward to making it through this homestretch into graduation and hope we can finish this year strong. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?